All right, well, we'll start off since we have a few visitors here. We'll start off with the visitors. On the left, Mr. Cunningham.
I'm just here observing.
All right, Mr. Brager, I have nothing better to do tonight. Hi, Mr. Rulli from your local auditor. I'm going to present the audit report tonight.
All right, sounds good.
Stick with the Monday tradition. I'll kind of turn it over to the principals here to give a brief update on some things that are going on. Mr. Lake?
Okay, end of semester is going to be this Friday. We started midterms last week and will actually finish those tomorrow. It's been tough with the two-hour delays and the cancellations. We've been able to rearrange the schedule and get the terms in. I'd like to commend the staff and the students. On the midterm days with the two-hour delays, we've rearranged the schedule, eliminated some periods and so forth, and everybody's been able to follow along. The winter retake window for the Keystone exams begins Thursday with algebra. We'll hit literature on Friday, no school on Monday, and we'll finish up with bio on Tuesday. Those are for the students in the class of 2017 and beyond that haven't scored proficient or advanced to date on those three Keystone exams, and we'll offer a retake, like I said, this week to finish up next week. And once again, a reminder that people in the class 2017 and beyond have to score proficient or advanced on that test in order to get a diploma. We'll be getting the scheduling process here soon in the next two weeks for 15, 16. I know that sounds a little weird, but at the end of this week, we're halfway through. So students will have information in their hands by February, and we'll start that ball roll in with the scheduling process. So we got high school.
Excuse me. When you start talking scheduling and I see Mr. Soder, so of course I go right back to the fab lab. We have any outlook prognosis because that would be lovely to have in the scheduling for next year?
Right, as of right now, the money still hasn't come through, right?
All right, no grant money, but I did get money from the Forge. And probably looking at about thirty, thirty-five to forty thousand dollars more from one of the other companies in Elwood. If they can front that for the technology equipment, I may be able to get it up there.
Okay, so how was that looking to get in the scheduling? Because that was the big thing with this past year. We never got it to the point where you could get it scheduled. You're looking at scheduling.
If I have, if I have funding, I can do it. I can definitely do it.
So how much more do we need?
Well, I mean, too, there's a staff, or we're going to have to hire staff, too, because current staff can't handle it. So that would be something during the budget process that had to be worked out.
Hey, good evening. Haven't been here in a while, actually. Since last time I was here, I had a Title I parent night out at Perry. Had over three hundred people show up. Gave a homework helper packet out to all the kids that attended, and it was, it was great. It really was. We had the food service preparing some food, and the parents came, and the kids were all smiles, and that was really neat. Any of the kids that didn't show up to get their homework helper packet, were given that packet the next day or the day after that. So all the kids got their packet, and they were all smiles about that. I'm back from my trip from China. I've been back a while. That was a great experience. One of these meetings when we have a little more time, I will try to show you a little video and give you a little highlight show. We've got a lot going on with audits and whatnot, so I'm not going to take up too much time talking about that. Perry has recently been designated as an award school based on our performance on a bunch of the things the state likes to measure. And as an award school, we have been awarded the opportunity to apply for a $50,000 grant. Team of teachers and myself worked together to write the grant, and we're very optimistic we're going to get it. I've already submitted it, submitted it a week ago. It's not due until the end of the week. I think the turnaround time on knowing if that is accepted or not is pretty short. So hopefully next month, I'll let you know good news about that, and we'll go from there.
Is that grant money should be for just anything or is it?
Um, it's got, it's pretty, it's general grant as I've seen from the state. It's got to be spent on Title I allowable expenses, and that's kind of the only restriction. So you've just got to be careful that you play that game a little bit. And I don't know, if it comes through, I'll tell you what we wrote down, and hopefully we'll cross our fingers for really good things. Again, that was because Perry was designated as an award school. We've got a new banner out there. I tweeted that out. If you're not following me, maybe you could, and you'll see those things as they come across the ticker here on the Twitter. Chromebooks are working out in amazing fashion down at Hartman. The Chromebook cards are great, so thank you very much, especially Mr. New Power for the card and whatnot. That was amazing. PTO came through big, and then the rest was, you know, approved by the school board, so thank you. Intermural program for fifth and sixth grade at Hartman was an overwhelming success. Boy, the kids smile. They made posters about it for the playoffs. The champion team got to play a team of teachers in a staff versus champion game. And the best part about that was the next day, I'm going off to Mr. Wolfong's room, and the kids are like, "Mr. Keeler, that was a good game." They were, they were serious. They weren't kidding around. They were serious. They had a lot of fun, so hoping to continue that tradition. On the horizon in a couple of weeks, the only elementary dance of the year, the snowball dance, will take place Saturday, January 24th, which happens to be the only football, the only non-football weekend between now and the Super Bowl. It just happened to be that way. Any questions for me?
Thank you. At Northside, we started our Ames Web Winter Assessment. All students at Northside will take the Ames Web Assessment with their classroom teacher or two other teachers. It's done, there are one-minute tests, and it's pretty painless for the children. We use that assessment data to drive instruction throughout the year. We give it in the fall, winter, and then we'll give it again in the spring. We have the Ned Show coming to Northside tomorrow. It is an inspirational-themed assembly that really fits into our be respectful, be responsible, be safe. Their motto is never give up, and then they fold in hard, be respectful, be responsible, be safe. I have a lockdown drill scheduled for Northside for January 28th, so all of our children will practice that. We have Dr. Spokane coming in February 2nd for our second grade students. And I am very busy preparing for a Title I federal audit later in the spring, typically in May. And Northside currently has thirty iPads for 399 students, so we're hoping that maybe we can make, provide our students with a little more technology than that at Northside. And that's all I have. Any questions for me?
Leslie wanted to update some things on special ed also, so.
We received Mrs. Massiosi-Rode grant for a dyslexia grant with PDE. We were one in six districts in the state of Pennsylvania to receive the dyslexia grant. It's a three-year grant totaling $120,000 over the three years. Starting in February, teachers are going to be trained. Mrs. Gibson, Jackie, and two teachers, Mrs. Amato and Miss Moore, will be going to the PDE training in Hershey. In February, all of the kindergarten teachers are going to start being trained in the Orton-Gillingham model. And we are going to start with, how many, three kindergarten teachers and two special ed teachers. And then eventually, over the three years of this grant, we will have all of the staff at Northside trained in that model. As far as the transition grants, Michelle and I are also going to the PDE conference, and we will be having a poster board there, and then we will be presenting at the Penn State Conference in July.
Yeah, question, I'm sorry.
Do you have to purchase the Orton-Gillingham material, or does that give the docs?
No, we will purchase it. It will be purchased through the grant.
Through the grant? Doesn't leave a lot of money.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and get started.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce John Rulli, who had introduced himself a little earlier. He's going to present the audit report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014. If you don't have a copy with you, I happen to have extra copies here, so just let me know if you need one or not. Everybody has one, John, so take it away.
Okay. This report is some sixty-one pages. I will talk to everyone, but I will address the things that I think were important in this preparation. On pages three and three, four, and five, this is the opinion, the independent audit report. And it tells you what we audit, what management responsibility is, your responsibility, what our responsibility is in auditing the financial statements. And we have given the district a clean opinion, which is what they call unqualified opinion, which is good. The next six through sixteen is an important, it's not prepared by us. Again, it's prepared by management here, the administration. And this rehash, it gives you the financial highlights. It's like a letter to shareholders, the taxpayers of the Albert City School District, board of directors, et cetera, that's been prepared to highlight the financials in their words, and also to give you a future outlook of where the district is going financially. And that gets us to page seventeen and eighteen. Now, this is the first presentation. It's the full accrual presentation. And by that, I mean the school district prepares their records on the modified accrual. And the difference is dramatic only in this respect. Here we disclose the assets of the district, the fixed assets, and the basic liabilities, the bond payables. Now, they are displayed to the PDE knows of them, but they're not incorporated into the body of the, what they call the annual financial report. This particular report is good. There is one piece of the puzzle that's missing, and as you well know, you've heard the pension cloud hanging overhead. Next year, that will be presented as a liability into these figures. Now, as you can see, our current assets, other government activities, which includes the general fund, capital reserve and debt service fund is some 10 million. The liabilities, the current liabilities, only 4 million. In the business world, that's good, two to one or better fiscal current working capital position, which is good. This report also is based for your bonding people, your rating people who rate your bonds, your debt. So again, this is very favorable. They also take into effect, they know, being these, the Moody's and so on, Standard and Poor's, that this pension situation is out there, and they figure that in, and you have a good bond rating. I know Mr. Zerone prepares a report for the SEC on an annual basis and submits our audit report with it and detailed information that is needed for the SEC to make sure the district is in compliance. Again, the fund balance or what they call total net position, in the business world, the year retained earnings is some 13 million dollars. Again, it's been set aside for the unrestricted. There's some debt service money that came through when you did the bond issue last year. It came through very favorably, and there was an excess of $4,300, which is going to be used to help, would pay the first bond interest payment in fiscal year 15, 16. There's also $1,200,000 been set aside for the capital projects fund for various things that need to be done as you continue to upgrade your schools. It's been a process of, again, here in Lincoln, doing this section. I know the roof is in progress on the main section of the school or over the gym and the various masonry work that is being done or has been completed since I could conclude the audit. On page nineteen, you are in the service business, so what happens is the expenses are always presented first. And this is a combining number, some $25 million of the government activities. And then the various subsidies that come in, grants and things, instruction, so on and so forth, that are credited against the charges, for example, if you rent the building, it's charged against the operation of plant. Student activities, that's the ticket sales and various other monies that come in through the athletic fund. And this shows a net after that, there was a net of those particular income over expenses of some $20 million. The deficit was made up by local real estate taxes, the grants, the basic instructional subsidy of the school district. And again, one of the things that sort of hurt everybody is the interest rates. As you can see, our, the investment earnings of the districts were only some $29,000. And I'll show you a little schedule on the back, and you'll see with the amount of money that you had able to invest, the rate for this is not good. And again, that's restricted. The investments are restricted. To what you can invest in, either got to be FDIC insured, they got to be collateralized due to state law by the banking financial institution, or if they are in some of these other type of little small funds, like what they call the Pennsylvania local government investment trust, they have to be backed by their securities they put up for collateral. So there was a positive net change in position of almost 700,000, which gave us this so-called ending retained earnings or net position. Again, some of the change, trying to make it the same but different as opposed to private enterprise and the public sector. The business type activity is basically your cafeteria fund, and it operated at a deficit of some 57,000, even with the $50,000 contribution to the cafeteria fund from the school district. If we can go on to twenty-one, this is the numbers that you work with basically day in and day out. This will be, you were probably in your budget preparation already for 15, 16. And as you can see, we have, the governmental funds are broken into three funds. The basic operating fund, of course, is the general fund, and it still has a positive fund balance of some $5,700,000. There's $1,200,000 in capital projects fund, which has been set by the administration. Thought there was some needs, and there was some money transferred with this year. And again, the debt service, that's the excess funds after you paid for paying off the old bond issue. This was a year ago, and this year, and it presented, paid off the bonds, paid off, and there was enough money to pay the cost of issuing the bonds, and it was $4,300 left over because the bond was sold at a premium. Total assets of the governmental funds are some $11 million, which is a difference between that and the full accrual method. If you go to page twenty-two, you can see how we reconcile the fund balance to net position. And again, the main difference is the capital assets, less depreciation, which is not a non-dollar item, which is not reflected in your numbers that you do in your basic operation, the property taxes that are receivable down the road, and then again, the long-term liabilities, which includes bond payable, crude interest, et cetera. And that reconciles, we go from a $6 million figure there down to a $13 million in the net position. So you can see there's a lot of numbers difference. It's just a reconciliation, and again, it's still a positive picture. The number again on twenty-three represents the operational end of the school district. The school district had some $25 million, almost $26 million in revenue. They spent $23 million in general expenditures, like your instruction, so on. And then down below, the debt service, which is the interfund, is another $2 million. And that came to a net change of, the district operated in the black, in an amount of $167,045. Included, that originally was a little bit larger, but they transferred $650,000 over to the capital reserve for, as I spoke to, the future expenses of the capital, some of the capital items that need to be finished with the building projects. Again, going to twenty-four, again, I know I'm speaking sort of rapidly, and I know I've got a lot more to cover than what you want to hear from me. And the net change in the fund balance was $327,000 in total, which included the capital, which included the capital reserve, debt service, and general fund. And we explained how that cut down to $693,000, positive number. Part of the one is the capital outlays that you make. We kept, those are capitalized in full accrual system, but in the state, it's a pay-as-you-go type operation. Plus, the state wants to know how your budget, which those kind of numbers look at. Same thing with the bond principal. They, you budget that in debt service, but again, it's a pay-as-you-go process, but for the other statement, it's a reduction of debt. And again, all these numbers work into the difference. As you can see, there was at the bottom number, the issue with the bonds of some 6 million, and then that also paid off that particular bond issue. I think I was here, we were here last year when, after we left the people from, it was the first question or whatever, made the presentation and were able to come up with a very nice rate on that new bond issue. Page twenty-five is your cafeteria fund. It's almost in a one-to-one position as far as current assets to current liabilities, or it is one, or negative one-to-one. Again, with the changes in the food service, the cost of food has risen, basically because of the fact that what the federal government is trying to have the students become healthier, eat better. And again, it's sort of hurt your bottom line because you can't do some of the things that you used to have on your à la carte line and things like that, unfortunately, the kids enjoy. But it's a health factor, and those have got to gold rule as far as the federal government. On twenty-six is the income portion of the food service or the whatever, of the proprietary fund. You can see there was $289,000 in various, from the Class A meals, et cetera. Operating expenses amounted to $880,000. There was an operating loss before the state and federal sources, and even your $50,000 that you contributed still, I came up to a negative balance of $57,000 for the operation. Now, I understand you have changed food service companies, and hopefully those things will improve. If I can get this to twenty-eight, twenty-eight is the fiduciary funds. In your activity funds, there are thirty-four different activity funds in your junior, in your junior, senior high. I didn't care that, I just have to count them. I didn't know there were as many. The trust funds are basically your scholarship funds, the stadium fund, and the athletic facility funds, that's what makes up. The bulk of the money is in Mr. Bodinsky's fund right now, which is a scholarship fund, which has been used to give scholarships both in the nursing area and the special education area. And the money that's set aside for student groups, as you can see under the activity funds, is some 68,000. There is a schedule on there, and we break out the clubs, I won't go to that, but it's in the back of the schedule, back of this report, and it, just out of your own curiosity, to see all the clubs that you have. Under, under the trust funds, there was, as you know, there was $7,900 to update the track. And that was money that came out of the athletic facility fund, or special needs fund type thing. And the other ones were scholarships awarded, which amounted to a total of $11,000 worth of expenditures in those funds. Now, the notes, and I won't go into these in depth, they run from twenty-nine through thirty-eight, something like that. And they amplify a lot of the information that's in here. They'll give you more detail. They explain what you are, how you perform, what our basis of presentation is about the government-wide financial statement as opposed to the governmental funds. It's those kind of things. And if we can go just sort of quickly, again, I don't hate to jump you all over the place, but on page thirty-eight and thirty-nine is a detail of the money that's invested, that the carrying amount of the school district. And if you go to the next page on thirty-nine, you can see in your governmental funds, you had almost $4 million invested. But because of the rates, and ESB, I think, was sort of kind to you because in some of the other districts you did, they weren't even able to get 0.5 percent, and that's a half a percent. So there is a thing where in the days before, you could help offset the mileage increases with the investment income. That has not been the case over the last few years, since about 2008 or whenever we had the housing breakdown today. As long as the Fed is sort of free with their money and have not caused the banks to borrow the money, they can borrow from the Fed at zero percent, so like go out and pay investors or whatever for the difference. As we said before, the next couple pages, they give you more detail about your real estate capital tax, the transfers from the general fund. Again, it's sort of misleading. When we say there's a transfer, well, when Mr. Zerone builds his budget, he builds in, and he calls it debt service. But for the accounting profession, we have to make a separate fund, transfer the money over. It's just a paper transfer to reflect. And I like the idea, and I don't know why they have not done that, why they just can't, you call it debt service and leave it in the general fund because it's budgeted in those, in that particular fund. But again, it's one of those things that the accounting profession is going to try to update and upgrade, try to make more things more transparent, and we see that, hopefully, we're doing that. Again, if I can jump another couple pages, on forty-two gives you your total long-term debt. Your bond debt, it's really not dead off of that, some $9 million right now. You've probably already made some principal payments, didn't reduce from that. Capital lease, that's the boiler up that was put in the high school here. That will be paid off in a few years. And you can see, the new bond issue is some $6 million. There's a million dollars worth of interest that's going to be paid out over the life of that bond from now through 2024. The other bond issue on page forty-three will be paid off in 2017. And if you look at our so-called government activities, down at the bottom of the page is the boiler. And you go on that with the principal, and it's a capital lease, some $369,000 worth of interest. We did a combining schedule as we always do on page forty-four. And the total bond and capital lease debt is some almost $11 million, $10,900,000. We go into the compensated absences, what is earned by the staff here and upon retirement or whatever that might be paid to them, and that is kept tracked up, and what is owed to those individuals. And again, that's sort of a, another expense that is coming. It's pay-as-you-go, but again, we sit down and it's, Mr. Zerone helps us, and we prepare a schedule of the compensated access that will be paid in the future, that the various staff has earned over the course of time. Your OPEB liability, this is the hospitalization. This came about through the Affordable Healthcare Act on page forty-six. And again, I think there is some movement. There was large insurance increases. I think it's much smaller, your health insurance costs are much more under control. I know you went to the Allegheny Consortium and to try to lower your health costs over the current years and into the future, and hopefully that, you know, will level off. But again, there's an estimated OPEB that will have to be paid on your retirees of some five, almost a half a million dollars over the course of time upon their retirement or whenever, until you pay, until they pick up Medicare. Another schedule, I just want to point out real briefly to you or point out to you, again, I spoke to the pension. And on page forty-eight, in the second, from the, second paragraph from the bottom, the school district and state's contribution weight was some 16.93 percent. They pay half, the school district pays half. You can see from 2012, that contribution was only 851,000. This year was 1,796,000, so it's doubled in two years. In the new rate, my understanding, Mr. Zerone, 24 percent?
24.8 coming up for 15, 16.
Fifteen, sixteen, so there is going to be, again, an increase in the contribution coming both from the state. They give you half, and then you turn around and remit it all. So it's, it's an area that they're trying to, they've taken, they finally have bitten the bullet, let's put it that way, I feel, and starting to, I'm talking about the state, to address that situation, and unfortunately, a lot of it's fallen back on the districts. Again, we just speak to you, that takes me basically through the notes, schedule that, again, if you ought to look at to see how your budgeting is on fifty-three, what the original budget looked like, what the final budget looked like after adjustment, and how it came into play in the areas. The next couple pages after that give you detail of what makes up local sources, what makes up the state sources in the detail on the different various income items, whether it's wage tax, real estate tax, the LST tax, the delinquent real estate taxes, et cetera, and that's what makes up the $10 million. It came in at a positive $600,000, $968,000 plus. And the other number that came in was you were able to recover the money. The IU, the Midwestern Health Consortium paid your money upfront that they thought it was going to take a couple of years to pay, and then Mr. Zerone paid the Allegheny Consortium's entrance fee basically off. Is that right, Mr. Zerone?
Correct.
So there's no big liability, it's just now pay-as-you-go. Again, that takes me through basically everything. Again, I know you've got a lot to speak to tonight besides me, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to audit you over these years. And if there are any questions, again, I went through this rather quickly. I can come back on, I can come back on Thursday, or if you need to contact my office, please do so, and we'll try to get you any answers. And again, is there any answer questions tonight? Again, if you do have questions, please don't hesitate to call us, or if we can't, if Mr. Zerone can't, we most. Jerome can't, we most certainly will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will submit the audit on Thursday evening.
Huh? Is it, if there's no questions, can I take a leave? I hope you get home in time to watch the game.
All right.
Hi.
The school district did go through a performance audit by the auditor general's office. I should have received the email call, but then it came back with a clean audit, so we'll send it down on Thursday.
Quest Tech finished their technology audit of our district. They were here a couple of days, did a lot of interviewing and questioning and met with Ellen and administrators and teachers and students, and we enclose that report in your mailing, and they will be here Thursday to give their report on what they found, some suggestions, deficits, areas of need, and so on. So that may be on Thursday.
Are there quasatory sale? We do have property that we've been receiving offer on by the requisitory for unsold properties. We're suggesting that the board accept the seven hundred and fifty dollar offer from Jeffrey Davis. I U Special Ed Services, I don't know, Mr. Gladehorn, if you wanted to comment on that with regards to sixteen students who we have in the I U, it's approximately three hundred sixty thousand dollars, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Do you want to tell the type of programs that we offer to the I U versus what we do here?
Within district right now, we have two programs through the M I U four, a K through six multi-disability support and a seven through twelve multi-disabilities and life skill support. We have significantly reduced our, our placements in M I U four programs just due to them.
With sixteen students at this point.
Some of those students are also supported through vision and hearing support services. So although they're not in programs, they are provided services through M I U four staff for vision and hearing services. So those may be students with I E Ps who are primarily itinerant in the general education setting who have to have curriculum modified due to hearing. We monitor their hearing needs, we're going to teach them how to check their hearing needs, and we currently have seven students with hearing support services and six students with visual impairment services.
Okay, we will offer a preliminary budget that will be on display come January twenty-third. We're working on that with limited information at this point in time. This budget will include a point nine-two mil increase only because I have to. At some point, we will want to look at the index plus exceptions. To consider exceptions, you have to put that large of a mil increase on. So doesn't mean the board's obligated to it, but we will have it in the preliminary budget, which will share additional information at this time. Mr. Mancini, I guess you got the dyslexia?
Yeah, this is, uh, Glenn Warren talked about the dyslexia. We have to start that pretty soon because the training is going to happen through the end of this year, school year, and it'll kick in full implementation next year. So they've already started the budgetary process. So they, it's forty thousand dollars a year. They've given the schools that got the grant twenty thousand dollars now to get the grant started, to pay for some of the training that's going to happen early on here in February. So we have to go into the agreement with Interstate Unit One, who's administering that grant. So that's why that is on the agenda.
The tax abatement program, we did submit that to the board back in October. The Borough has moved forward. I've not seen their resolution, but I believe they determined some boundaries for tax exemption. So if the board's interested in passing a resolution, you may want to ask Mr. DeCaro if he might give us some advice as to how to proceed with that. I don't know if the board's interested or not at this point in time in pursuing it, but now's our opportunity to talk about it.
I think it's definitely something that we should look into because if you just have two mills closing town, maybe we can do anything we can to bring in business and operations and send it to target.
I was at last one's counseling, maybe just go ahead and okay.
Did they, did they designate the areas then? Because I've not seen that resolution.
I don't know that, I don't remember hearing them say anything about specifics, but they might have a date, they voted on it and passed it.
Our board is interested in a resolution for Thursday or?
I'm in favor. Most towns, I think, I think a lot of them in the counties are doing that. The thing that I, that I've heard from my, my dealings is that you get a lot of businesses that'll come in, will stay five years, and then they leave before they have to pay the taxes, and that's not good either for you because now you've supported this business for five years and you've gotten nothing for it. So there are definitely closing on things to look at, but this town is not doing so well right now. Like Matt says, we just had two closings, the hospital cut back, I knew Santa Barbara does it, and the temporary closure. Yeah, all rolling?
Mr. Gard?
The whole state of New York.
Do we have enough interest to?
We could always change it back. If we, like, if we did approve it and we saw that it wasn't working, no, you can't go.
I think it's a five-year abatement, so I think once you pass the resolution.
Right, so once you pass it, it's for five years.
Whoever got into it would get the benefit of it.
Right, but if we decided at one point we didn't want to have any more.
Not have to continue.
You don't have to continue it after it expires, but you can rescind it.
So it'd be a five-year program right up front.
What about a three-year program? You like offer something, we'll get two, three years still with the Borough, but not with us.
I think you have to do it in conjunction. Everybody's got to be.
Mr. DeCaro, is it possible to have a business access specifically and then grant it on an individual basis?
Got to have a abatement.
Okay, it has to be there, it can't be dependent upon size or no restrictions per se, it's just kind of all or nothing in what designate areas.
It's the designated areas, yes.
And who decides at the Borough?
Yes, I think the Borough did a, they had a public hearing, if I'm not mistaken, and they designated the areas that would.
If a business comes and stays three years, they don't have to pay the taxes back, or we don't know?
I'd have to see how Borough did it, and I imagine it'd be some.
So if we do decide to move forward this, it'd have to be the same language as the Borough. We see it?
Yeah, how we plan to move forward, we don't know. If we don't even know what the designated area is.
Well, if there's interest, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention so that if you decided it's something you want to pursue, I don't think it's something that would be on the agenda for Thursday.
Okay.
Something to get you additional information, solicitor DeCaro would have to draft a resolution. So I mean, it's something that if there's interest and you want us to pursue it, pursue it. If not, then it just won't, won't move forward. Let's, oh, the board, is there enough interest to look into this?
I, yes.
All right, well, there's definitely enough interest to pursue.
P S B A Policy Service, we use P S B A to give us recommendations for policy. Our policy manual has administrative, professional, and classified employee sections, and they only send us recommendations in the three hundred, just one called employees. And then we have to take those and mirror them for every classification. And it's a little bit, you know, burdensome, and, and what they will do now for that sixteen fifty is take all your three hundred, four hundred, five hundred policies, combine them into one called employees, because that's the only way they send them out now. They don't send you classified employees, professional. We have to look at it and adjust it, and so we're asking for board approval to go into agreement with P S B A to take our three hundred, four hundred, five hundreds and combine them into that one section that will streamline our policy manual to just employees instead of those different classifications.
Does that include like printing costs?
I believe so. We send them everything and they do it and send it back over a period of time.
Joe, we're going to do five hundred then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Combined. Well, let's wait till they get finished, but I've just started the contact with them and they sent that information that we would, that's out of the process. So, because all these new policies that came down for child abuse and everything, they only sent one. So we've got to take that one policy, then change it for administrative, classified, professional, redo all the wording. We looked at that, that they offered that, and we said, why do we keep doing this when they, when they can do it for us, so.
They're offering, when I was down in Hershey, they, they had somebody there showing me it's all online now. And our policy manual actually be online, where you can just go in and type in what you're looking for, and it'll be sapped right up to you.
Right.
That's supposed to be, I think they said by the S R.
It's coming, it's not here yet.
Yeah.
They still email them and then we. Personnel education, the executive, properties transportation, some facility requests, L H S cheering boosters, request permission to operate concession stand during the Boys Junior and Senior High home basketball games for a fifteen, sixteen school year. Getting on that early. American Cancer Society requests use the Helling Stadium, football field, track, practice, football field, lights, press box, restroom, concession stands, water, electric on Friday, May fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, from five to nine P M. per setup. On Saturday, May sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, eight A M. till midnight for the annual relay for Life Walk. Special Olympics, Lawrence County requests permission to use the L H S Boys Gym for basketball practice on Saturdays from three to five. Dates on February seventh, fourteen, twenty-one. Says it's already being used, so I have to work out something with that. Twenty-eighth, March seventh, fourteen, twenty-one, twenty-eight, April four, eleven, eighteen, twenty-five, May two, nine, sixteen, twenty-three, and thirty, June sixth, two thousand fifteen. We do that every year for Special Olympics. E C Girls Softball League requests permission to use L H S Girls Gym for practice on Saturday, March fourteenth and twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, from one to four. And those are all of the facility requests. Got the authorized bid for supplies and installations requesting authorization to utilize the state bid contracts, cooperative purchasing initiatives and prepared specifications and advertised for general art, industrial arts, custodial, science, and athletic equipment supplies for the fifteen, sixteen school year. We sent out the, again, the safety committee recommend, I'm sorry, the road safety audit that was done earlier this school year. Mr. Lake, who's in charge of the safety team, met and they kind of looked it over, and they sent out that letter. There are some things that we can do on our end. I believe the Borough agreed to do a lot of the things that are on their end, signage, crosswalking for, you know, the schools. So basically, that's just some information that come budget time, we see maybe planting hedges, you know, in front of the Lincoln here so kids don't walk across through the islands over that are over there, some sidewalk, additional sidewalks in certain areas. That's what that would be from, that recommendation, and that's also what the safety audit team recommended also in that letter.
No, I think it's just a lot of the, came down to the Borough producing some signage. Mr. Keating was pretty satisfied, Perry and Hartman and Miss Gibson was satisfied with Northside. One of the additions, like I said, out in front of Lincoln in the morning here, and between Steve and Rich and myself on the safety committee, we have some thoughts, and like I said, just going to come down to possibly put some money towards it. Yeah, true.
Do you know what the walking school bus program is?
I don't.
Good question. I didn't know either.
Walking school bus program? That was in the report? That wasn't brought to our attention when we discussed it. So no, I don't, Mr. Gard, I'm sorry.
So what? Question, in that report, was the recommendation to enforce the no pickup, no drop-off fund?
Which building?
Yeah, man. How would that affect Park?
Which, was it Northside?
Both, I think.
Both, actually. Well, that would be the police department, you know, I think.
When I was at the meeting, it didn't seem like they were going to get too involved, they were going to be present a little bit. I told them I would be present a little bit, and I'm making a particular fuss once the Second Street is closed, I'm about to make a particular fuss. We can't have people parking there, you know, that's going to be part of the detour or close to the detour, people are going to be doing what they want to do, going fast. So I'm not going to go crazy, call the police if people are dropping off, picking up, but when that Second Street is closed down, I'm going to be out there and I'm going to be waiting to get by because of the danger and whatnot. And I think that's the most important thing for us. We're never, ever going to get rid of all of it. It's just not going to happen. But if we can minimize it and especially during that time, show a little presence, and like I said, Lieutenant Kingston told me he would be out there if I needed him out there, especially during that detour time. But I think that's pretty much what, what we're talking about. I don't think they're going to have a, a presence out there on a daily basis, drop-off, pickup.
I have a question, and I don't know if I've already asked this before, I don't remember if I've put the answer to this, but there's no way after a certain time, the parents can drive through the bus lane and drop off at Hartman with their own kids?
Well, that's what, that's what we tell them to do.
Oh, okay. They just don't do it?
Most do, but.
Because I know before, when I dropped my kids off, we weren't allowed at that point.
No.
You know what I mean, to go back there, but it would just make more sense.
Predominantly, but the problem is, it's predominantly and it's not a hundred percent. And when you got someone stopping in the middle road and kids running between buses, it gets hairy out there.
Yeah.
And now after school, we can't have parents pick up in the alleyway because we have buses lined up there and on Crescent Avenue. So that's not possible. But I, I send multiple automated phone calls beginning of the year, reminding and begging people to follow those rules for safety issues, and invariably, it's just, it's not adhered to a hundred percent, but for the most part it is.
At Northside, we have a couple of teachers out front every morning on Orchard, and so they, if somebody violates that safety and drops a kid off and they're walking between buses, I call them immediately. It's rare, but it's, it's also very startling to see it happen. But once I call them, then they, they usually, it's somebody unusual, they're all big enough that just don't know our team.
And that's one way now with the site, right?
It was supposed to be one way, yeah.
But now Hartman won't leave. That's possible for it that way.
Do you want no parking time in, in front of the school for pickup is what he's, you know, what he's saying.
Yeah. I mean, again, particularly during this detour time for Second Street, ideally, people shouldn't be parked there, it's a yellow curb, they shouldn't be parked there ever on the yellow curb, because there is available parking along the Holy Redeemer side of Fourth Street. But on the Hartman side, it's a yellow curb, there shouldn't be people parking there, but people do.
Do you think it would be easier if we could ask that none of that would be parking? So that way there's more.
That's where I park the church, every people.
But just during school hours, so there's, you can.
Well, the problem, we have a problem with parking.
Do they have, I think, I think they have that.
One side, one side being parking when it's, when there's not a detour, I don't find it to be a problem.
Right.
It's when we have cars on both sides, everything gets squeezed, and now you got a problem because, because then you, someone double parked dropping off a kid, and now you got four lanes of cars, because that person behind them, they're in a hurry too, and they're ducking the other lane and coming through, and that's when it gets really, really dangerous.
But aren't they going to make that no parking? I thought that was another part of the, the ordinance while the detour is in place, is that will be no parking across the park.
Yeah, well.
That's the suggestion, that's really a problem.
That was speculated, I believe those are pretty much my people there, because probably we have a real parking issue as it is anyway. Even if it's not something that the Borough comes through with, I will talk to my people and they won't park anywhere in that town.
Well, if they don't, somebody else will.
But who? You know what I mean, who? Like, because once church is over at seven, there's not going to be anybody else there. You know what I mean? So, I think once, once I ask my people, direct my people to not park there during the time that Second Street's down. I, there's nothing else around really that would require parking there. I think we'll be fine.
Students park there. Students see the free parking, they're gonna take it. They park on my street, number one, frankly. So, if they see the thing closer to the school, they're gonna jump at it.
I guess we'll cross that bridge, we can do it.
Have to ask for temporary parking.
And we are. They know, they know what we want.
They know. Now, for, for actual Short Street, for here, do you guys know what you just want to go ahead with?
We have some idea. We just have to fine tune. Like, for instance, you know how there's a middle entrance into the bus lane? We want to take that out. So, extend the sidewalk all the way along Short Street. And then, the, like on the sketches, I'm not sure if you guys have those in front of you or not. Extend a sidewalk at two different places. So, you have an almost signage that says, stop one here. And then, right, hopefully, they, they listen to that. They'll drop their kid off and they'll be across, walk through the sidewalk, through the sidewalk, across the bus lane. So, that, stop two here, there's the other alternative. All right? Because now, if they're in line, they're stopping wherever, dropping them off and they're darting through. So, I think if we take that middle part out, extend that, that curbing all the way through and have two stops with signage. I'm hoping that'll clean that up a little bit. Our concern is, kids just walking randomly over the island, so to speak. And putting some type of barrier, you know, whatever it is, fencing, a bush, you know, whatever we come up with, that's, that's worth that.
And then, is Short Street then going to be one way also?
Short Street's already one way.
Is that one way?
Yes.
It's all over.
I'm thinking maybe one way.
They were talking about making one way.
Is that going to be one way or not?
I don't, I don't think that's gonna happen.
I don't think so.
They have added a stop sign coming down right outside on, maybe to Short Street.
Yeah.
Park out of there. I don't know if it's there yet, but that's what the borough is gonna take some action to do.
Because that's one stop, two stop sign.
And people come.
When they made Short Street one way this past four year, that's cleaned up a lot because everything's flowing one way. Now, we just have to get drop offs at a particular location where it's safe to cross across the bus lane. That's our next goal. Well, if we get that, we're in the right direction.
So, no more dropping off in the bus lane at all, walking in front of.
Well, that's where it should be now because the, the buses drop kids off in the bus lane. No cars, parents, whatever, should come down the bus lane now. They come on the street.
Right.
Stop wherever and the kids dart across the bus lane. So.
One of the suggestions was also to drop off on Crescent.
And then just let them walk down the sidewalk.
One way. I'm sorry.
And then just let them walk down the sidewalk.
Walk down the sidewalk. Because it's a wide sidewalk.
Yeah.
Over there, just drop them off.
Have you ever considered using the other entrance that we have down there?
Well.
Administrative entrance.
Then, that's more personnel for me in the morning. I'd like everybody coming in one, one entrance.
But that'll be on at some point in budget time. Right in Steve's budget.
Is that, do we have to have like, I don't know whether it's, you know, get us a price for that? Is that like?
Well, that'll be all this process. They talked about getting in touch with the architect.
Same thing.
Yep, natural gas. We belong to Lawrence County Natural Gas Consortium and with all that has been happening in the market, we have an opportunity to reduce our costs eighteen to twenty-three percent. I just got pricing in today, so pricing is two dollars and eighty-seven cents per decade term if we decide to go through October two thousand seventeen. We're currently at four point seven 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 and we use Eric Ryan as our consultant. They seem to think we're bottoming out. At the time would be right for us to go ahead and make a purchase. What this is, is making a purchase of the commodity of natural gas. Then we pay a small fee to transport it through the various lines Columbia Gas. We've been part of the consortium quite a long time. We've done fairly well with it. And I think that I would recommend that we consider taking Eric Ryan's recommendation to go through October two thousand seventeen at three dollars and eighty-seven cents per decade term. And some of the, the pricing I have seen is that we've kind of hit what we think is gonna be the bottom of the market. So, what I'd like, if I could tonight, I mean, this will be formally presented for the board to approve on Thursday. I would like the authorization to acknowledge to Eric Ryan that, yeah, we're gonna go forward because time is of the essence. We're watching the market on a daily basis. All the other members of the consortium have gone to their boards as well, asking for authorization to move forward. So, the formality would be Thursday if I can go ahead and have the authorization to tell Eric Ryan we're, we're ready to move forward.
Any objection to that?
The next item on the agenda is, we did put in a new telephone system, so we have quite a few old telephones sitting around at this point in time. What we'd like to try to do is look at our board policy seven oh six point seven to dispose of them. And we'll try to get some value for them, but for the most part, I mean, we replaced the system because it doesn't function. So. If we can get rid of it by selling it, we will. If not, we'll go into policy seven oh six and kind of dispose of it in one of the allowable ways. And we'll have that on the agenda Thursday for, for the board to consider.
Charlotte City Baseball Federation is requesting permission to make improvements to Freedom Field, Press Box, concession stand and no cost to the district. I think there was a letter, questions to that.
Just wanted, because you're just talking about that. Was that not like cause of problems like the union or anything? Was it working on that bill?
As the unions might have complained in the past.
So, I've never heard that.
We were just, I was just saying that where, you know, things become an issue because somebody's doing something that somebody else should be supposedly getting paid for instead of just accepting the help.
I think because it's not regular maintenance. It's more of a one-time improvement.
It's always been the understanding that E C A D F doesn't cut the grass because you have a person, Steve, that routinely cuts the grass. That was always my understanding.
That's correct.
But these other one-time improvements have never been an issue.
It shouldn't be, but I just know that certain things in the past have been, so I just kind of wondered if that, if I step on some of these toes.
Hill Trips, Mrs. Hall, transition, transition teacher and Mrs. Walter's gifted coordinator, request permission to take ten students to their leadership conference at State College. Leave on Sunday, March twenty-second at noon and return on Wednesday, March twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen, approximately four P M. Transportation will be shared with Riverside. Cost of hotel and food is paid for by the conference. They've gone to this in the past and it's been pretty good for the students that go to that. And get a lot of experience in leadership. We talked about the dyslexia grant. I think we pulled the board on that. The reason that's in there is that it's obviously gonna delay the feasibility study for half-day kindergarten if we accepted that grant. Because we need full day to be able to implement it. Two thousand fourteen, school calendar revised with the cancellation of school. We moved the in-service day to the, the day that was canceled. Worked out pretty well. We were prepared for it. We had done that in December. Presented the teaching staff. We had a half-day. They had half-day by contract working their classrooms. So, January nineteenth will be a holiday for all students and staff and the makeup day will be February sixteen for the closure that day. Hopefully, not too many more. I think that's all I have. I'm sorry. Agenda update. We do have a change in a policy that, we had our administrative meeting and Jackie Maciosi, who's not here. Asked about changing the policy two oh one, which is admission of students, and I believe you have it. There's one that is the original and one that is the highlighted, the updates. We're asking that it be changed and we are asking it to be changed for admission of kindergarten and first grade students. Change is a result of earlier start dates in August and the fact that the start dates may change from year to year. Our policy says it starts on the first day of school, but we have kindergarten registration in March and parents start thinking about it in February. And we usually won't pass it calendar, possibly to March. And that leaves some students that they turn five in, in between that week sometimes. So, the recommendation is that we use a set date, August fifteenth, instead of the wording, first day of the school year. So, all parents know, five by August fifteenth of that school year. The board may, on written request of the parent guard received by the district, no later than June first, admit a beginner whose chronological age is not less than five. And who demonstrates readiness for entry of honor before August fifteenth, when recommended by the school psychologist and approved by the superintendent. That would give the school psychologist time to do testing, like, you know, sometimes she would get requests to do testing in August, just before school started. And that kind of put her behind to test a four-year-old to see if they're ready also. Again, kindergarten will be the same, August fifteenth of that school year if you flip it over. Parent or guardian may request early entrance to kindergarten for a child who will reach the age of five years before, after August fifteenth, but no later than December fifteenth of that year. This request must be submitted right to the district school psychologist by March first. Once this request is received, an educational team will, which will include the district school psychologist, building principal, kindergarten teacher. And any other educational professional deemed appropriate by the team will determine the child's readiness and make the final determination. Before, it was just a school psychologist. We thought it'd be better if a team got together with that student. It also gives the ability for that parent to bring that child to kindergarten registration where they go through the process. And then they also will be determined to use that data. Leslie, you want to add anything to any of this or?
One of the things we're seeing is that we have a lot of four-year-olds starting kindergarten and then they're retained. And it's just, if we have a set date, some of our early intervention kids, then they can receive another year of early intervention. Because our cutoff date is August fifteenth, not the, excuse me, the first day of school. So, we had, for example, two twins last year that were able to enter, were retained this year, but could have received another year of preschool. And it would have benefited them. And we've consistently found that the K through four, it's our kindergarteners that are being retained. So, they can receive that extra year of preschool.
Most of those kindergarteners are very young.
This year, we had five kindergarten students start who are only four years old.
Is it mostly because the parents just don't have, can't afford to keep them in preschool or no babysitter or something they have to send them to school or?
It can be part of it, but for early intervention services, they have to come to school. So, if they're a speech language student, for example, they continue to qualify for school age services. They then have to go on to school age services because our policy says that they're ready.
Is there any reason for like the December fifteenth date? Because I know that would affect me like two days. My birthday, my birthday is December seventeenth. And what if I was four years old?
No, we just thought, we'd give it that four-month period. We just had to pick a date. I mean, like August fifteenth. We could have gone, some schools are August first, some schools are first day of school, September first. We decided to kind of split the difference. We looked at some other policies. We'd like to date August fifteenth and gave them a four-month leeway to make that decision. It just gives us a set date instead of, because we've had kids fall in where they've done the I E P, where they're gonna start kindergarten next year. But we've set the starting date, let's say, August nineteenth, but they turn August, you know, twenty-fifth or something. So, you know, that just kind of ends it. Parents know August fifteenth. It gives us a set date for start. So, we're asking for that policy to change. Just came up Monday at our administrative meeting, so it was kind of late to get it out to you. One other thing, and it probably goes under the dyslexia grant, and this is also from Jackie. Is that for her to administrate the dyslexia grant over the next three years, we're asking for permission to hire a psych intern. And this is a person who is in their last stage before they become a school psychologist. And would give her time to implement this grant for this next year to get it started. The compensation would be twelve thousand dollars and that would come out of the grant. So, it wouldn't cost anything for, you know, from the district. It would just kind of be a replacement for Jackie to take over a little bit more of this grant. And the psych intern could take over some of the evaluations that she is doing. And we need to get this out now just because they're graduating pretty soon in, in the spring and so on, and they're finishing up their last semester before they have to do their internship. So, we've got to get the word out to the three schools that I E P, Duquesne and Cow that have school psychologist interns. And we've done this before. We've had a psych intern, I believe, in the past and they're pretty beneficial. So, with this dyslexia grant, kind of opens up an opportunity for us to get a psych intern to help out and do some of the evaluations. So, Jackie can get involved with the dyslexia grant.
Is there an issue with that?
No.
No, they, they get it, they have to have it with their school, I believe. I think that's what Jackie said.
You said twelve thousand?
Yes.
And you're only getting twenty? And there's, there's.
We're getting forty.
We're getting forty.
You said twenty.
Well, twenty to start. Like, they want to give the school districts twenty, like right now, up front, so they get the training with the other twenty probably later in the year. So.
So, that'll be enough to cover.
Yes.
I just heard Mister Garda asking about the materials, which I didn't realize. I thought that money was more covered than.
We can pick and choose those materials with the teachers after they go through the training, what they want to purchase and what they don't want to purchase. So. I know it's gonna be, I mean, we're, it fits into it. Plus, like I said, it gives us an opportunity to have somebody like Jackie run and control this grant, get the teachers trained and so on. So.
So, when the teachers are out training, like these three are going, then there's a substitute.
That's different. That's, well, it could be during school or after school too. So.
Oh, so some are, some of them not doing school hours.
Right.
So, they get paid for that time, I'm sure, for the training.
Correct. It's all part of this grant.
And it all comes out of the grant.
Yep.
And it works out. Seems like it would pay more money than that.
I think we're okay. I think we sat down and did a quick budget with Rich and Jackie and I and about per D M.'s and how much time. Well, to use some in-service time. So, those group of teachers will be doing something different maybe than what the rest of the teachers are doing also during in-service day. So.
Joe, are you sure you're gonna pick and choose the material you want?
I think so. I mean, we're just starting on this, but a lot of the money's going towards teacher training. Because it's not so much of the program, it is what to do differently to meet the needs of those students that aren't doing.
That's a rubber influence. It's different. It's so different.
We went to a dyslexia training a couple of years ago and we see our certificates for that. And it really was about using things you already have, but doing, teaching differently, using different kinds of materials. It wasn't just buy this program and use these materials. It's a whole different way of thinking.
So, when someone's diagnosed right now in Charlotte City School District with dyslexia, are they not?
Through the state of Pennsylvania and through special education, you can be identified as a student with a specific learning disability. Although they may have characteristics of a child with dyslexia, you don't receive special education services specifically for that D S M four diagnosis. So, it is a specific learning disability.
But after, after the teachers get all the training, they'll be used, be able to use the word Gillingham on other kids?
The goal is to reduce special education referrals through the assessments, the activities, being proactive. And so, yes, the goal is not to just do this with special education. The goal is to do this with any student through that screening process. That is identified as needing those research-based techniques.
So, that'll be on the, Thursday. And the last thing on the update was, we did have the administration recommended policy attachment that's been on the board for a month. Urgency physical restraint forum changed and, so that'll be approved also. It's been up here, just some warnings changed. That's all I have.
So, it's definitely, it's not like it died.
Thank you, Mr. Nancini. With a couple of other informational items, reminder of the board retreat. If you haven't, did everybody R S C P?
I don't know.
Can you talk to the other guy?
I have to check. But I can.
But I can...
Yeah, it'll be six-thirty on the twenty-first.
I believe I did.
Yeah, everybody, I think, except for Matt and Jen.
Yeah.
All right. Also, a quick reminder, before the meeting on Thursday, we're picturing taking from the Woody, and NAEP.
Mr. Lape's favorite test, the NAEP test.
We were notified that we were chosen to select, or they select, so many students out of the eighth grade to take math, reading, and science for the national NAEP test. I mean, while I'll be with contact with the NAEP representative, and initially, they chose about fifty eighth graders, and they'll be completing that next month, on top of PSAT tests in April, and keystone exams in May, and I'm going to just leave it at that.
All right.
I, we had to upload our eighth-grade roster, and they sent it back to us, saying these are the ones that have been selected.
Was it voluntary, or?
The parents do have the right to opt out. I sent a letter to the parents of the fifty or so that had, were chosen, and that was due back, if they opted out last Friday, and I didn't have one response. So, those fifty will be taken to test. They sent a representative from NAEP to actually administer it, and that's part of the data that the federal government uses of how we score nationally in math, science, and reading and so forth, so.
How long is your test?
Um, there's, that's more that I'm going to get into tomorrow with the representative. It's going to get done in the morning, and I'm not sure if there's two sessions, you know, one session, I haven't got that far. There's a whole checklist online that I have to fill out, and I'm about two-thirds of the way through, and tomorrow, I'm supposed to clear my schedule from eight to nine-thirty for a phone call from the NAEP rep, so.
Do those kids get to make up that? I mean, do they have to make up?
Their classwork? Well, I'll send a notice out to their teachers to be flexible.
I have a question one second, I'm sure you've answered it prior, but when we do the keystone tests, and then ones that don't pass, and we have to have the remediation test, does a company come in and do that, or is that our teachers?
Those are our teachers, test administrators, and, and I don't know if you know, but every test administrator has to take a forty-five-minute online cl- uh, session, take a, take a test, score eight out of ten, to get a certificate to be a test administrator. And then there's other training that Mr. Mancini and myself have to give those test administrators with test security and all nine yards, so it's not just pick somebody to give a test, it's, it's pretty rough.
How long are those tests?
The keystone exams, each module, they give you about eighty or ninety minutes, but a test from the state never has an end. A student needs to take extended time, you give them as much time as they, they need.
Oh, really? I thought they were mandatory times.
Give you a recommended time, but there's extended time, they can, you can take some, give them a separate room to finish with a monitor, those that don't finish.
Get to stay down, work on it until they're done?
We have to put them in an extended location.
You have to check mark also that they...
And then we have to check mark that they took longer time.
All right, before we go into executive session for personnel, we'll go back to visitors, anything, Mr. Cunningham?
Uh, no, thank you. Congratulations on your new year, right?
Right on. Thank you. Mr. Brayman?
Who can we recognize for your lovely gifts?
Yes, he bangs.
Good for them, we should pass that along.
All right, before we go to executive session, I had asked last year, Mrs. Kara, about what we had to do for have a prayer before board meetings, gave us some information. Do we have to adopt the policy, or?
You'd have to adopt the policy that invites all the clergy in the community without restricting it to, you know, certain religions or excluding certain religions, and they randomly, you know, they sign up, and whoever's signed up next comes and they lead the implication prior to the meeting. And that's based on the Supreme Court's decision last year in case I, in New York. There's been, some commentators are saying, as to school boards, it still may be challengeable because the existing Third Circuit Federal Court of Pennsylvania has looked at school board meetings as an extension in the classroom, so to speak, and because students can be present, so even though the Supreme Court said in the municipal setting it was proper, it could still be challenged for school boards. But we would have that policy.
Just waiting for a law, for freedom of religion, I understand.
I'd like to ask the president, if you could just pull the board, if we could go ahead and ask solicitor to write that policy.
All right, we have consensus in the board. Mr. Trell.
I say no.
Mr. Gardner. No. Mr. DeSally.
No.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Ms. Panzera. Yes. Mr. Morales. Ms. Grossman.
Of course, I'm going to say yes, but...
So, if that's three yeses and four nos, I'll, I'll say yes, so it's going to come down to Mr. Stevenson.
There it is, nothing more than a task of solicitor to write the policy. Board still has to...
Absolutely.
You know, another question I have is back to Mrs. from the tax evasion. Does anyone know, has the boroughs of Elport, Waltham, and Wayne Parish Township done anything?
Not to my knowledge, but I can follow up and find out if they have.
The reason I'm asking is because they're asking us to vote on this, and possibly, they could all adopt different, whole different tax evasion programs.
Rich, if we go ahead and adopt this one, we're kind of bound into it, if they adopt different ones.
Well, I think we would be gone, and again, I can stand to be corrected, obviously, but I think if we adopted something for Elwood City Borough, then that would rule, and then there'd have to be, I don't know, potentially another resolution for the other municipality.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
If you think it was, it's only going to be in certain areas, correct?
It's based on what the, yeah, it's based on what the municipality sets.
Yeah.
Like, right now, so you're using Apple in Elport, and I don't think Elport has any, does Elport have any rules or...
Well, I'm just suggesting, it may have been, entire community should be involved and come up with one set of tax evasion policy.
I agree with you.
But, it might be difficult.
Yeah. It's easier to get people to disagree. It's easier to get people to agree.
You asked Mr. Gardner about walking the school bus, Mr. Sue looked it up on her phone. In general terms, it's a group of parents, a good, a group of students that walk the same route to school every day, and the parents are more like the school bus safety, so. She found a paragraph online, that's what it said.
It can be organized, you know, very stringently, or it can be kind of low-key depending, but yeah, that's what it is in a nutshell. I also have something on a new business, we had discussed at the last meeting, since they were so short, about changing the start time of the school, and it wasn't on the agenda, so I'd like to see it still put up for discussion, or get the study like Mr. Garda had suggested, working on that for the new budget, too.
Yeah, I think, Jen, you weren't here in...
The whole side of the table was in the background.
Yeah, so we decided, last, last meeting to postpone it until we have the full complement of board members, and of course, Bob isn't here, but I guess the, the discussion is, we want to approve the administration to start a, a study to look into a later start time, which we kicked around some ideas of what that study would be, whether it would be, and it would probably be a little bit of all these things, surveys, talking to parents, focus groups, get everybody involved to come up with pros and cons, because it's a big, big undertaking, you know, as far as busing and the other schools that would be involved, and VOTEC and things like that, so I was talking a little bit with Mr. Mancini before we started. My question is, you know, is it feasible, how long is this study going to, to take? And, I mean, is it even feasible to think that even if we started the study right away, that we would be, have all the answers in time to start this for next year, especially in light of the fact that they're already starting scheduling? So, I mean, I guess it depends on what we decide to move forward, but I think that's going to be a real tight time constraint. Personally, I think we might be looking at not next year, next school year, but the following for such a big undertaking. But, we decided that, I mean, I guess we just need to find out, do we have enough interest at the board level to move forward with commissioning a study, whatever that study turned out to be.
Even like I had said before, especially regarding the Hartman kids, I mean, we have these ten and eleven-year-old students that are getting up at six o'clock in the morning, and that's just too early. I mean, I see personally what the effect is, because I have my son in fifth grade, and that's early, and some of these girls, I speak to their parents, these little girls are getting up even earlier because they're pricking, and granted, you know, you can tell your kids, you're not going to do this, but this is what they're doing, and I feel that that is way too early. And if anybody read any of those studies that I linked you guys up to, I mean, they all are positive on later start times, are going to increase our test scores, are going to have better behavior, less problems in school, there's not a negative thing to be said about it. So, I'd like to see us at least be looking at Hartman, getting them back on elementary time, and then, you know, if it's going to take us longer to make a decision on the high school or the rest of the schools in general, on how we want to, to get our school district in place with that, but I really feel that we need to move forward with getting the younger kids back on a later schedule, which I feel that we have enough time to do that by next year.
Okay. Any questions or comments before we pull the board?
Yeah, the administration, are you aware of any schools about later starting time?
At the high school, I asked at my last tri-county principals' meeting, the, at the high school level of Lawrence County, I think the latest starting time is, is right around eight o'clock.
And our late bell is?
Seven forty-five right now.
I did, Mrs. Petrelli, read the information that you emailed to us, and the original study, University of Minnesota, was done like fifteen years ago, and my question is, my big, is, it's been around for a long time, but I don't see any other schools doing this, and it's not that I'm opposed to doing it, it's, it's manageable, because we're the only school that does this, my concern is, anything we gain from it educationally could, the negative effects could diminish that.
What negative effects are you going to find?
Because it won't be manageable, we're the only school that does it. I know you don't believe that, but...
Well, maybe we'll be the, the one who starts it, maybe people will follow us, if we are a leader instead of a follower. I mean, this, this, this isn't my studies, there are lots of studies, it's not just one, there are several, and they all say the same thing, later school times, later start times, better education, we're, I mean, there isn't, there isn't a negative thing to be found about it, so maybe we will be the catalyst that starts everybody to a little bit of a later start time. And we weren't talking hours, I mean, in exception when it came to the elementary department, I mean, that's early. I mean, if you have a ten-year-old in your house, and they're getting up that early, and you see the effects on them, maybe your opinion would be a little different, that, that that's early for these little kids. I mean, let's face it, the work, workforce is based off of what? A nine-to-five schedule?
No, it's not.
Traditionally speaking, it is. Traditionally speaking, a work, a workday is nine-to-five, or eight-to-four, and that's an adult, that's not a ten-year-old.
I mean, I've worked my entire life, and I have never worked nine-to-five.
What, what time does he have to be on the bus?
If he picked up the bus, he would have to get on the bus at twenty-five after twenty after.
Of six?
Of seven.
Why is he getting up at six?
My son's not, we drive him, we don't, he's not on the bus.
No, I'm saying, why is he getting up at six to go on the bus at seven twenty-five?
Well, that's my son, some of these kids who live outside, they're, they're getting on the bus at seven, or ten to seven, depending on where they live. Some of these kids are busted, and they're on the bus for a half an hour, thirty-five minutes. So, if they're getting breakfast, and they're getting to school by seven-thirty, then they're on the bus before seven. And, and again, it's been a safety issue. I, I hate it since my kids were in school, when I drive down Lawrence Avenue at seven twenty-five, or quarter after seven, and you see those kids walking across this street bridge in the dark, in the snow, that's scary. I mean, talk about dangerous, we've had a couple of kids get hit because it's still dark in the morning. So, you know, you could say fifteen, twenty minutes, doesn't matter, but that's the difference between daylight and darkness. And Mr. Garda sees it, too, I mean, every, anybody who's up there, you see those kids walking to school, and it's bad enough if these kids don't wear coats, and all the other silly things that kids do, because we were all kids, but, I mean, we're responsible for that, we can change that, and when you see the educational benefits and the, and the benefits they say on behavior, I mean, how, how do you turn away from it? How do you not, you know, try and see what positive effects it's going to have? There's nothing that says there's going to be any negative effects.
Is, are there any other questions? I'd like to finish before I was interrupted, as I said, I'm afraid we're the only school that does it, because it's going to be managed. It's going to create, and any benefits that are gained may be diminished by the fact that it is not manageable, it may actually hinder and hurt more students than it helps. There are other students who are not top academic students, who actually need more instruction time, are going to be deprived of that at the end of the day, and moving school back, whatever it is, maybe daylight then, but after school and the after-school activities, then it's dark again. And there's a, a lot more complex things about people picking them up at those times, though it's still in the dark. But again, as I was saying, I'm looking for some, a hard evidence of school districts somewhere that have done this, and have produced it, and I'm asking the administration, the professional educators, I'm not getting anyone to produce those, that evidence, so, that's just my opinion.
Kathy, you have something?
I went on and did research, and I found studies both ways, both saying it's good, both saying it's bad, and a lot of the ones that even said good, at the bottom, it said that these could be hindered by parents' work schedules. Sports, to me, I don't care. If they have to do sports later, then they have to do sports later, but parents who are required to go to work, that count on their students getting home to take care of younger siblings, so we're talking about, before we make any kind of decision, I think the parents need to be, and the teachers need to be a big part of this discussion, I don't think it's something that we should rush into without getting, how is it going to impact the entire community? How it's going to impact VOTEC? If we don't go to eight o'clock and they start class at seven-thirty, those kids automatically off the bat are a, a half hour off the schedule.
They're on a separate bus schedule, we just, we didn't touch base on that.
They're on a separate bus schedule sometime, I know some of them ride in, because I followed the buses up to VOTEC.
They said otherwise, I don't know.
They changed?
They're on the same, or they would be on a separate activity schedule with the other kids.
Oh, okay, because I follow the buses up to you as a follower.
Some people do not believe extracurricular activities are part of education.
No, I do believe.
They will be on a different schedule.
Yeah, but I, I believe, before we make any kind of decision, we need a study...
Right.
...that takes the parents and the teachers into consideration, we just can't make a...
Well, that's what we're talking about, is doing a study to move...
The way you were talking today, I thought you wanted to push this through to start doing it.
No, there's, no, this is study.
No, I just want to see, I, I'm okay with the study.
That's what this is about, moving forward on this.
Um, I would say no, unless the administration brought this up and said it was a situation that they felt was an issue, I would say definitely, you know, let's go for the study or whatever, but, I mean, I don't know, I'm sure your opinions were asked, I, I know, it's like you have a thousand things on your plate, and, I don't know, I just, I would say, hold off on this, unless they feel like, I mean, I guess I got to ask them, do you feel like this is something that...
Right now? No. I don't.
But our scores are down, and this is something, since financially, we have a burden on our hands, but we don't know what we can do with, this is something that we can do, that...
I'm not going to accept our score tonight, I'm not, I'm not going to accept that.
Right.
All right, well...
I'm for no, for the feasibility, for the study, so, I don't know, that's what you were looking at.
Well, let's pull, let's pull the board, whether we're in favor to commission a study. Well, let's, let's pull the board, whether we're in favor to commission a study, is, is what I'm looking for. Renee, is it yes? Mr. Garda? I'm a yes, but I wanna qualify that first. I think we should do an initial survey of parents, from staff, and get that reaction before we take, you know, further step. I'd like to know that if there are people who would be willing to back that movement. Okay. Mr. DeSally?
No.
Mr. Cortez?
No, I think our administration has enough on their plate right now.
Ms. Fancera?
The only way I would agree is with George, that the parents and the staff be given a survey, and like if, if the survey warrants a study, then, then that, but outside of that, if there's no survey to the parents and the teachers, then no.
Mr. Morel?
Yeah, I agree. I think we should have a survey, not just for parents and teachers, but potentially all stakeholders...
Yeah.
In the district.
Very good, yes.
So, get their input, if there's enough interest there, then I'm okay with the further study.
Ms. Grossman? Well, I guess now that Mr. Garda qualified his, his statements, it brings a, a question on, on my end, I mean, at, at what point, uh, are we looking at doing this survey? What's the timing of this survey, and, you know, Mr. Morel said all stakeholders, we need to clearly define who's, who's a stakeholder, and then how do we manage that? Um, you know, I think teachers and parents are easy, uh, because we know who they are. All stakeholders would have to kind of define that, so that we know who we were, who we're getting input from, so, um, kind of brings up some, some additional questions. So, and I would say, I'm not opposed to a, a survey, but we need to get some parameters set up to see how we would even go about doing that, and who would be included, so, um, my vote would be no for now, but let's, let's work on, uh, over the next month or so, a, as a board, let's try and find who we wanna include in the survey, and, and then move forward, at that point, it would be, uh, who we wanna, we might actually need professional help. Well, I know, I need some professional help.
Who to include and how it's gonna be conducted.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's tricky. I also would, my fear on doing a survey would be, you're gonna have mass hysteria with social media, the way it is today, I could see this thing blowing up, you know, it could be good, could be bad, um, but we, I just think we need to be careful about how that's done, um, so that would be, I think, my first wish would be, let's, let's figure out how we wanna do the study.
Do we do any blogs on the, on the EC, um, website or anything, that you could just open it up for discussion?
You could blog, we could do a survey monkey, there's all kinds of options.
Like, I wonder if we could just start out minimal, like something like that, like a blog or a ser- or a, just a question, what is, what do parents, what do students think?
I mean, is that reliable?
Well, it would just maybe get a start. If you get a large kickback, then you could go on with the next step, I don't know.
Well, to be honest, I think, you know, if, if we surveyed the students, and we surveyed the teachers, I think those, they're gonna offset each other, so students are all gonna say they're gonna wanna come to school later, and all the teachers are gonna say, we want those that were working now, so I think those votes are gonna, you know, cancel out each other, so, I mean, who does that leave us? It goes with the parents, and, you know.
That's gonna go by the work schedule.
Again, we might actually need a professional, uh, ser- someone to do this, they know how to ask questions and keep the study, not excuse, putting you on a blog, you can have people reply, one person can reply a hundred times.
Right, right.
I just have to, I just have to add, when you guys switch Hartman's schedule to a high school schedule, which is ask anybody?
I told you that they were on the school, haven't you?
No, Hartman just changed, like, two years ago?
We did, yeah, we changed the, uh...
Because I know my sisters used to ride the bus with me, runs up to school.
No, it just changed.
No, I mean, we didn't...
Well, actually, that was done, and, uh, that wasn't done in one year, it was done up here for several years, consolidation plan took place, that didn't just happen that year, it was actually brought on by the state budget. The plan was considered for several years, and it must have passed meetings once.
That was a compromise too, between the high school and Hartman, because the high school used to start earlier, now the high, the high school went back fifteen minutes, and I think Hartman...